At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, May twenty four, twenty twenty one meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Supervisor Larry McDevitt, Mike Stein, and myself, Jack Willie. Lisa Smith, our county honor, and being aware that is helping us with the camera and first item on our agenda this morning is.
First on your dinner is an open fuel bill.
All right, we can do that. This morning, my first bid here is from River Valley Energy. River Valley Energy for gasoline. The ethanol blend gasoline is point three four four. Number, number two diesel fuel is point zero six five. Winter blend is point one zero nine and diesel fuel additive is point zero one five.
And these gallons to a bush here, that's normally what we use if they don't get that far.
Business morning is from A Vantage FS. This is for an LP gas bid. The delivered price per gallon from A Vantage is at one dollar and two two nine cents, one point two two nine cents. There is no bid for gasoline or diesel fuel. And the last bid this morning is from Mole Brew Oil and Protein Company. They have bid one dollar and twenty nine cents for LP gas.
One dollar and twenty nine cents.
One dollar and twenty nine cents. Gasoline, they bid point three five two nine. Diesel fuel, number two diesel fuel is point one five three one. Winter blend point one five three one. And diesel fuel additive is point zero two.
Oh, River Valley did bid the LP?
So it appears, yes.
Is that normal?
I'm not sure. I think mainly right now.
One twenty two or one twenty nine? No, I mean, I take it as one twenty two nine. That's one twenty three. Is that correct? Am I reading that correct?
Yeah.
For, for advantage of this.
So last year was like eighty nine or something like.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, we contracted last year. So there are no taxes on the gasoline type, I guess. And to be per gallon when you.
I think it's their, their cost plus them own. But that would be a guess. Market was so he's blocking in their profit. You're still subject to the vagaries of. Fuel prices. We have a lot of storage. You're not, it's hard to tell what was high.
We've, we've increased the tanks. We're trying to replace all the old. Tanks. Type of above ground tanks. So we've been purchasing even larger tanks.
It's surprising that they didn't build the opening, how they do. Is this something that you want action on David or do you review this and come back with a recommendation?
We can do it.
Yeah. Come back.
Entrance permit for Mr. Joel Beach Fairfield Township, a Class C residential on our side of Ironbridge Road. By Roger in the field and recommend approval.
Second motion and a second to approve the Joe Beach residential entrance on Ironbridge Road.
And I.
I.
I have an update on the second avenue. Received an email from the public insurance company and they were amenable to the additional cost for the painting. But they haven't submitted the revised release yet for it. Okay, but that was good news at least. So hopefully they'll get us the paperwork.
Yeah, it'd be good to finalize it, I suppose. Where are we coming with our bridge northwest of town here? The one that.
Kevin?
Yeah, no, the one that's no longer there that's supposed to be done. Is there any plans for near future start down or not?
Hundred eighty eight, hundred eighty eight.
Is it hundred eighty eight?
Yeah.
By bad beach.
And it should be, you'll have to check the link on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did he get, did they get that one yet?
I don't know if he got that one or not.
I think he got that one, but he lost one on by Sunday.
Yeah, that's, that's what happened though. When you move with that leisure lake, it's a black top.
That should be starting within a week or a couple of weeks.
Another batch of two fifty, it's moving right along. They're there every morning at seven o'clock. I think they work Saturdays on this.
They can progress on that rain.
Yeah, they're just about to cotton bill from Lamont. They started Lamont.
And then you're coming back in and bring us changes that you're.
Oh, yeah, we talked about that.
Yep.
We need this, we don't know if Sarah's even available or does Becky need to review it as far as payroll or anything?
Isn't that your?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, visitors and citizens, are there any visitors that wish to address the board? Doesn't look like it, so we'll move to. You want to do yours? Lisa says John Matillo is not on. I made a motion to approve the minutes of the May eighteenth, twenty twenty one board proceedings as written by Honor Smith, an authorized publication in the official news. So moved. With a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor? I, I. Motion needed to approve and authorize the Honor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of one hundred eighty eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty four dollars and seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second, with the note, we had about sixty thousand all total in grumble again, so I heard a couple. And after the rain, I heard a couple complaints, but all in all, it sounds pretty good.
Yep.
But with a motion and a second to approve the claims. For one hundred and eighty eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty four dollars and seven cents, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry. Motion needed to approve a special class C liquor license, Class B wine and native wine permit, living quarters with Sunday sales to Oaklandville LLC. At twenty two zero ninety five, Highway sixty four, Macocana, effective May first, twenty twenty one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Do you have invested interest, I guess?
Better than my daughter, no, but I can abstain.
That's what you did last year.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve it.
And I would second the motion. All those in favor? Aye, aye. And because we have a public hearing today, I will wait for the rest of my agenda, but since Luanne is gone, I will go through the calendar, what you have. So obviously this afternoon, it sounds like you will be having a work session with Conservation Tour with Nate from Conservation. So that's at eleven o'clock today. Tomorrow, you do have an Irish meeting, Larry, by Zoom at nine o'clock. And from twelve thirty to four o'clock is the nine eight eight coalition meeting by Zoom for Jack. And tomorrow night is a Jackson County EMSA meeting at the Andrew Fire Station. Is that for all of you or?
I think it's for anybody and I get, and I would think, but if anybody wants to go, I think it might be interesting.
Okay, all right.
So would they be discussing the new law that was passed through? Let me.
I don't know if they'll be discussing. They just mostly discuss their local me and mess services and maybe what transpired here the last couple of weeks.
I would assume they will know now that it is a. Essential service service, I would guess.
It was always. Oh, yeah. I think what I read was it was.
Okay, all right. So that meeting is tomorrow night at seven o'clock then.
I don't know any parameters. Have you heard any parameters on that? I mean, other than.
I have not. I'm guessing. That's I was just wondering if there's an update for them or, or who would that come from?
They're probably looking for it to come from us. That's my guess, but I don't have, other than what I read that it passed. The House and the Senate and that went to the governor for signature. I haven't, I don't know any parameters.
Maybe we can contact Isaac.
They're not.
And see if he could send us whatever impression he has on. You know, actually, Isaac does have, you know, a meeting to update on the laws that were passed. So maybe something will funnel down through that.
Yes, but they can't. It's probably going to have to come to us. I mean, they'll have to set up a budget and then bring it to us and we don't care. Because none of them are really looking at officials where they can get tax somebody. Is that right or? I guess I don't know how the law is written either.
No, I would guess it's just that they're going to say it's essential service and we'd have to provide X amount of funding out of any, like I said, I don't know any parameters.
They've already done the legislation.
Yeah. Never read the bill.
Yeah, I don't know. Thursday, May twenty seventh at nine o'clock is the RPA, the Regional Planning Affiliation, the meeting by Zoom for Jack and Larry. And at ten o'clock on Thursday is the CSEI or the Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa. That's also a Zoom meeting for Jack. On Friday, May twenty eighth at seven AM is the leadership team for Larry. Next Monday, May thirty first, we are closed for the Memorial Day weekend or holiday. And we're back here next Tuesday to nine o'clock to have our regular meeting, so I think it's a late week. I have a question concerning our meeting on June eighth. Luanne had indicated that you would probably not be here.
Well.
Because of the tractor cable.
That's the plan. So if you want to move that meeting, I'm.
Well, last night, and together we build, they're having, they're providing the. What do they call it? The morning break at Preston. And it's from, they're setting up at seven. It's from eight fifteen until. Oh, the last, they figure the last people will leave at noon to come to Macocana. And I just thought if we could at least maybe move the meeting till in the afternoon that day instead of in the morning. And you probably still wouldn't be able to be here, but or we could move to Wednesday if we wanted to do it on Wednesday.
Well, ours on Wednesday too, right?
Wednesday afternoon would work for me.
Well, then we'll have it Wednesday morning.
I'll give it that.
I think you get one of them little iPad sticker things and put it on your steering wheel or something.
Well, you know what? I thought about that, but I wouldn't have internet unless I stopped you like, well, we stopped at Coonhouse for dinner or something. You know, that data was the only thing, but I had no idea where I'll be.
So we, I mean. So are you available Wednesday afternoon?
I am.
Would you rather do that than once? Because you're gonna, I guess you're gonna ride someone.
I was figuring on this. If it's here, I figured on right on.
Are you thinking like, I want a clock meeting straight?
My dad's. Fifty nine, massive Ferguson fifty that I reached over.
Okay.
All of the euros. And I thought I had the original receipt.
Think I remember that tractor. I took her down to the bones. That's a, we're stronger. Six.
Are you checking the schedule, Joe Jack?
Yeah, Wednesday, the only thing I have is in, in the morning, I have something from. Zero and sixty, zero to five and sixty. So the afternoon would be okay for me. We have RTA that morning. At. Nine thirty.
We do.
Well.
Ten to. No, that's on the second.
Oh, that's right. I couldn't see that because it was blocked. No, the night.
There's nothing on Wednesday.
You know, only thing I have on the night is my ECI zero to five.
So one o'clock on the night.
Sounds good.
That wouldn't work. That would also be claims week probably, since we had them to date, we won't have them next week. That would be a second.
Okay, but.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And. So meeting June ninth at one o'clock.
Yeah, we need a motion for that.
Yes, please.
Yeah. So moved.
Second to change our meeting, week of the seventh to the ninth at one o'clock, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry. And I think that's all that I have for the board right now, Matilla, bunch of carrying at ten o'clock. Okay, I know John was walking back and forth out. John, morning.
Everybody doing today?
Good.
Rather be out on the river fishing though, right?
Good morning, you're on camera.
Really?
Oh, yeah, everywhere.
Okay.
Haven't forgotten.
And recorded. Just wanted to bring up an issue. That we've been having with the commission, the Veterans Fair Commission. We've tried several things and. What, we have a commissioner that. Maybe he's been to one meeting in a year, maybe three meetings in two years and just doesn't seem to be working out very good. And I do not know if, if the supervisors have a policy or any kind of. Unwritten rule that if the member doesn't show up, if there's a way to replace him or.
Most of my boards and commissions that I serve on, if you be missed three consecutive word meetings without an excuse, you get a letter saying that, you know. If you want to continue on, let us know, but you have to start participating.
Well, that, this is, yeah, yeah, this is what I mean.
And then you're gone.
What I'm handing you here is, is pretty much copied from Johnson County, what the Johnson County VA does, and that sounds very similar to what you're talking about there, Mr. Wiley.
Most organizations have their own parameters, procedures of how they do it now. Some, some also allow an alternate to show up for them. So I guess it's up to your board or your commission at this point to say, this is what our parameters are going to be.
Okay, well, we certainly can do that, but I, I guess we thought that it was a supervisor's decision to do this. But we certainly can set those ourselves if, if that's okay with the.
That's, that's, that's how I, I would see.
Perfect.
I guess my other question, John, would be, have you talked to this?
We have. The problem is it's, it. It's Tom Water and then he's, he's working during the day and it used to be that he had a different job or a different shift and stuff and he was able to make it. And, and, but that hasn't, he's changed somehow and we've tried. When Deb's over Bellevue on that Wednesday of the month, trying, holding it there later in the afternoon and that doesn't seem to work though. And then in the wintertime, we have several commissioners that they, they don't feel very good driving in the dark to do it in the evening. And so there's, there's other, other issues going on. So, but if it's, if it's okay with, with the supervisors, we certainly can set our own parameters on that.
I would just decide what you want to do and move forward.
Perfect. I don't think there's anything that would not allow them to do that, correct? I mean, you're your own commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, but you, you guys have oversight over us. Well, yeah, I mean, like the nine one one law, we have an alternate if they don't, if they're off, so show up when the F and H was four, five, six times a year, we say, hey, you know, you don't want to be on it.
We have. Yeah, I'm not sure that he doesn't want to be honored. I think his heart's in the right place as far as concerned for veterans and that kind of stuff. It's just that with his work, it's, it's kind of difficult.
So when are your meetings normally?
Lately, they've been on the, the first Thursday in the month and we have them in the basement here in, in the conference room.
Is that during the day or?
During the day, usually one or two o'clock in the afternoon. But we've had them in Bellevue at three or four o'clock in the afternoon.
Did, did you used to have like twenty four years ago in different?
Oh, well, we did kind of. We, we, well, one of the things we did was when you were running for office, you stopped in on one we had in Preston. Or was it Miles? Miles, I think it was. And one of the reasons we did that is Miles is a very small post and we gave him twenty five bucks a month for, for the meeting. And so they had a little income going on there and, and at the time. Junior Miller obviously was, was the VA commissioner for, for. For our group and, and he had, that was his home post. So we, we held it there. There's a lot of times he was there working on something. Oh, but as far as rotating around the county, we really don't have anything like that, like.
Yeah.
We've had it different places.
Yeah.
Not what worked out was obviously very good was when Deb would come over to Bellevue one day a month and that was used on a Wednesday. And then when she was done with her appointments and stuff later in the afternoon, then we'd have it. And so, but one way or the other, you're going to have people driving, you know, it would be the two from Macocana coming over. And but Deb would already be in Bellevue and, and two of us would be there also, so it wouldn't be any mileage, so.
Sure, yeah. Well, it makes sense if you can centralize it or make it accommodating for people to come.
Well, and then obviously the COVID thing, we didn't have meetings for, for a while and then we were able to, to, to social distance in the basement here. And so then we started having meetings here again that, that learned enough rent to do that.
Sure.
Other than that, I'm sure Deb has told you, she was able to get some retroactive pay for one of our better.
Yeah.
That's pretty, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah. That put a smile on somebody's face, didn't it?
Certainly did. Maybe more than one.
No, I can understand.
Okay.
So what has Debbie, what was her input to this? I mean, has she had a policy procedure?
No, she did not. She got this from Johnson County and she, she actually kind of brought this up that maybe we ought to be doing something here.
So maybe you want to use that. Now I'm talking to human resources to say if, if there's other companies, she can just automatically check with them too, I don't.
Well, that's what Deb did with this. This is verbatim from Johnson County, what, what you're reading there. That's their policy. And so Deb did some background work on that to check out what, what, what we could, what was other commissions were doing.
Yep. So do you have somebody else lineup that you might be interested?
Not at this point. We got a, a new one. You're aware of that. In fact, well, Dorothy's listed, Dorothy's listed there.
Okay.
And so it. I'm, I'm aware, I'm sure you are too, that commissions need to be gender balanced and so.
Oh, yeah.
Then you hear all about that.
Oh, yeah. So do you have a policy, John, as far as, is there a quorum? With the people that are at the meeting or do you need a quorum of the commission?
We need a quorum of the commission. That's why we went to five. So that, we used to be three commissioners. And so then if one guy was gone, one guy would be gone during the winter going down south, then there'd be two of us. And if one of us couldn't make it, then you couldn't have a meeting. So that was one of the reasons we went to five. We figured it'd be easier to, to have three people there than, and so. So, so, but we can get mostly, we do not have issues because there's usually three of us there.
Yeah. I mean, that's what some boards do too. Also, it's a horrible, how many that are there? So if there's three there, two would be a quorum instead of three.
Yeah. We've gone on the COVID watershed authority. We have a quorum on the executive board, which is like the chair and. Next year for, it's like five of us on it, I think. So if we're having a big meeting with thirty eight members. I mean, we used to have to have twenty people there and that's having a quorum and that is.
We're not that way. Because I mean, with our five people, we just need three. You know, that, that seems to work pretty good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Have a good day, John.
Yeah.
Starting will recess and maybe we can. Joined by Tommy Assessor.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Beautiful morning out there. So we're looking for a little update here. What's been going on? So I made a few notes here. Obviously, we got done with our year of the pandemic like everybody else, so. Everything was changed, how we did business, but we still had to do business. The state didn't say quit doing your job. So we got our job done. Assessment rolls went out last week of March and is, is probably, I don't know, most valleys went up. So it was, a lot of people had questions. After they go out, we have informal reviews with our staff, myself and staff, and we did about forty of those and, you know, a lot, there. Lot of questions that people were asked were if, you know. Did, did my house went up ten percent, but the neighbors across the road didn't go up ten percent. It's only went up less. We don't do stuff by percentage as all, and like being really, because you'll know that every house is different and they're. They're based on age and depreciation, all sorts of different things, the location where you're at, you know, and, and people get tired of hearing this, but a house that sits on the river. Is going to be valued differently than the house that sits in the middle of a dump, you know, that's just the way it is. So we had about forty informals.
Yeah, it's so.
And we had thirteen appeals that went to the board review. They met several times. Their work's complete. They turned all their work into the state. That went very well. A lot, we didn't have any problems with, with, they told me they didn't have any problems or anything went smooth. I think a big thing was that people, as much as we know it, because we're all in the business kind of watching real estate. A lot of people didn't realize that their value of their house, you got more value. Every house, you know, there's, there's so many houses that we see, we have at a hundred and twenty five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and they get sold now. They're a hundred and seventy five or two hundred thousand, you know, it's just. And I look at you, Mike, because I know you know this, we can't keep up and the values keep going up. I don't know when this is going to blow up or will.
I don't know how you can be an afraid right now is my. I watch these things happen and I'm going, I'm just saying, just a thing there. Listen, I also did a question that again, I put on the market final question and now I have eight showing on today.
That's unheard of, you know. And, and, and I know enough talk to enough realtors that the price you put on it maybe probably isn't going to end up be the price because people were a bit, I mean, a bit higher than what.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but so that made our, makes our job kind of tough, but, and, and some people really didn't. They must have watched the markets and don't care, but when you tell them, you know. They must have watched the markets and don't care, but when you tell them, you know, uh, your house that we had a hundred forty thousand, we now have a hundred eighty thousand. And we're probably too low with that. But if you, you know, we, we had a good informal, so most everybody was, uh, was pretty darn good about that. I, I don't have nothing, uh, bad to say about our process. It worked. People did, most people do listen and understand what situation is, so.
Now, I guess with that being said, we had forty, forty, forty formals and thirteen went to the board review. Was there some adjustments made or?
We made some adjustments. I'll just tell you, just one I can think of, one house that I called, the guy goes, you raised my house this much, said, have you seen my house? And then I said, uh, no, I said, but we will come and look at it if you want. I said, cause last time somebody was in, it was in two thousand eleven, which is storm. We don't go in every house. You just don't do that. But there's, if we know something's going on, a change, we go, like, I went to the guy's house, he said, uh, he said, I did a lot of work on the inside, but my brick's falling apart and it was, it's terrible. I don't know how he's gonna fix it because the bricks are crumbling. The whole structure's sinking on the, the, he called it a certain kind of Bellevue brick. That's softer than what, anyway. Old eight, eighteen sixty or something like that.
Gleaner brick.
Yeah, that might be what he called it, gleaner brick. So it's, then I looked, he goes, see where this is sagging in the basement and see where the water's coming? Yeah, we didn't have any of that stuff documented. So, yeah, Mike, and that one made adjustment. We made an adjustment, maybe out of those forty. We'd go out and look and there'd be different things or maybe we had something measured wrong, maybe something was measured wrong. I said, my garage ain't that big, whatever. We did make some, some adjustments in them. And then the board review, well, they, they do their, and, uh, I don't think they made any adjustments, um, you know, we, I think that was pretty much, uh, some of them. I, you know, there's one person that, that was, when he didn't like my explanation, he wanted to feel a word of it, was anybody can. Feel supported. He did, but the reason I questioned him, I said, well, you, you paid more for the house than what we have in sets that. I said, why are you? I said, you're admitting right there that it's worth more than what we haven't done yet. He goes, well, I just want to take a shot at this. That kind of wasted everybody's time, but, but he, you know. This person has everybody, everybody has read, but we got through that process, so, uh, we really didn't make many change. We made some changes. If we see something, we got goofed up. For whatever reason, like I didn't know this guy's house was basically collapsing and he don't know what he's gonna do. Uh, yeah, we made changes of that house. The inside's beautiful. Didn't change nothing on the inside, but the scenario was, is terrible.
The inside's no good without a good house.
Well, and the problem is, those are brick houses. I mean, there's, they are brick all the way through.
Yeah.
It's not like the newer house for the bricks.
No, this is, this is the foundation and everything. So, but, uh, so we'll, we're ready to get started here again. Now we have some, uh, logistics we do with the computers. We have to certify and do a bunch of stuff, but we will start going out in the field. You will see, um, um, my white, uh, truck and, uh, a white truck is silver Dodge SUV, I don't know what it is, and a Ford Escape. Those are three vehicles. They say Jackson County Assessor's Office. Those are vehicles you will see out there. We have nobody else looking at anything at this time. In the fall, we have a commercial that comes in, helps us with our commercial. They go out for one or two days, so, but right now, that's what I see out there. We get permits from the cities. That's how we know what's going on in towns, that there, if there's renovations on a house or a new house, whatever. Row residential, if there's a new house going up, we'll get a, uh, driveway permit from, uh, Dave or Mike Clausen gives us the permit, so we know there's a new driveway going on. We watched that. And then they'll get a sewer permit or wealth permit and Kimberly and Christina, they'll, they give us that information now. That all comes to us. So we have an idea that something's going on. Otherwise, we drive all the roads. Uh, right now, there's a lot of construction going on. People are spending money. Uh, you talk to contractors, they're all busy as can be. And so we'll see what we find out there. I know we're gonna find stuff. The farmers seem to have some money if they're not buying iron machinery. They're putting up shops and different things, so we'll, uh, uh, to me, I think it's gonna be busier than average, but this year, there'll be, we'll be able to go in some houses they didn't want us in last year. We didn't win a lot of houses, you know, we, you know, mask up and our rubber gloves and our booties and everything. That was kind of pain, but this year we'll, it'll be a lot easier for us, hopefully. We'll still wear masks, everything they want us to.
Coordination between the offices is better than zoning office that if you can see when permits went out, you know something's gonna happen and, and.
Well, I was, that's why I was alluding to that, so you guys know that it's, we, it's working really well. The way we've talked, that it should work, um, and it's working between all the three offices that I mentioned. Um, all give us the, the engineer's office was always really good. You know, Clark always gave us the driveway permit or Mike, he always gave us the. But that's always working fine. The other two offices are, they're in our office, I'm gonna say every day to talk about something. Uh, cause they're doing, helping Jess is kinda helping with the PIS stuff on the maps and all that stuff. So we're, it's a very good working situation right now. So we, we have some continued education to catch up on. A few that have to have tested hours, like me and Jess are the ones that have to have tested hours now. Um, but I'm done, I got my test, thank God. But they didn't, they quit doing tests last year because you couldn't meet groups to have the education. So we'll be doing a little bit of that stuff this year. I'm gonna, some staff is gonna go for new education. There's some new education opportunities come up that I want to send at least two staff members to. So we'll be working at that, cause again, last year we shouldn't do any of that stuff, but, uh, that's what's going on. We're kind of looking a little bit like business as usual right now. The reason it's not business as usual is because we can't keep up the values. And yes, last week I went to a district meeting. Uh, and that was pretty good. First district meeting I went to, we did Zoom up until last week. And so the first time I seen everybody and it's, uh, the same story all over. They can't keep up. They put a value on something and the decoration of values come in when they sell and it's like, I went through yesterday, I went through. Um, I think there was twenty that Jeanie had given me that she had processed. And then I look at everyone, look at the property and see it, and I, then I look at where are we at? Our, our ratio, are we at that ninety-five to a hundred and five percent? Well, we were right on the money on a few of them. We might have had one that I looked at valued a little too high, but we were in that hundred and five percent. And every one of the rest of them were they, we were, we were twenty percent too low. I, I looked at it, I said, what? You pay that much for that house? I can't believe it. So we can't still get a handle on this and, you know, I, when it'll, and new houses, when they build them, our manual, we have to keep raised, I don't wanna get into specifics of how that works, but we can't just put in there what the book says because, materials are too high, we, you know, where it's close. So, yeah, I think we're at a hundred and twenty-five percent of the manuals cost right now, so we're twenty-five percent. And we're getting a new man, which is another, they printed a new manual the state has for us to start. And it mandates when we have to start by, uh, the state isn't getting their software or something all done, so they're pushing it back. When it's for us to do something, there's no pushing back. We're ready. Too bad, you gotta be ready anyway. But when they wanna be late, they can't, I'll just find a little stamp for that. Not too bad. But that's what's going on. I don't know if you have any questions, otherwise things are going good in the office. Don't have no, uh, problems that, uh, I think, well, while I could complain about their commissioner, but. I did, I just did, so that's fine. That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, any other questions for me or?
Thanks for your.
And you know that the, the conference board will have to meet after the first July, will have to meet to, to do our formal, uh, review on me or whatever you wanna call it, and, uh, that has to get signed and sent out and stated by the chair, which will be ejected. So I'll set that up where, or I'll let you know when that's gonna be.
That'll be fine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, there's nothing. And let's see, you have any boards or commissions wanted to bring up?
Early childhood, Iowa did hire a new director. I'm sorry, I can't remember her last name.
Did I hear you were getting a bunch of extra money here? We tried to look at getting another program?
The Department of Human Services is getting considerable funding for childcare and, where that was at our Human Services Board meeting last week. They started listing off the, the dollars that were coming to Iowa.
Definitely in need for that.
Yeah. Um, so, but we had our meeting yesterday and, um, and last night, um, they hired an exec, uh, an assistant for Miranda. And she will be starting after the first of, uh, June. And, uh, together we build Matt last night. They, they have, they had a discussion on a, a door that they wanted. In their new building and said that John had said that was a necessary place for a door. So I did tell him, if you want a door, tell him you want a door. And we all laughed, but, um, uh, they still haven't said when they're gonna break ground, um, uh, and so I don't know, I'm hoping. John wants to bid their, 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 um, building and our building at the same time.
I think that's with the, from the perspective that we might get a lot better bid if they're in the area, that they can go from up here to hop back and forth.
So anyway, anyway, that's what they said last night.
We talking?
Fall.
November, December, October, what do you think?
Well, I would say as soon as, so this we get the floor plan finalized, we can even go out to bid then.
And get. Cause we need to work stuff. When they said the pre-cast is out till February now, if we order it right away. So the longer we wait, the longer the project goes out too.
He wants to set up another work session here soon and I think he'll be on. He's gonna be on.
I talked to John yesterday.
Yeah, I just.
Said that, yeah.
And I think it's important that we do keep moving forward here with it. The bonds were said.
I agree.
I mean, I know where the bids are gonna come back, but we'll have to find out.
Yep.
Yeah, just part of that northland, if it goes up a quarter of a percent. It would increase the interest by ninety thousand, like the builder.
Yeah, we had a, yeah. We had a house trust meeting last weekend, that's all, we really, we got their money allocated and everything's working as good as they can expect. Uh, they're getting more applicants. So we're gonna need out there. They actually got a little extra funding too.
The WMA gets their water test for the whole watershed last Tuesday. You have to do all the tests or samples and then get them out to Cool College the same day. So there's quite a bit of coordination over the place of the river.
Okay, several recess till we have our public hearing at ten o'clock in the meeting and it is ten AM and it's time for our, public hearing on the budget amendment. Morning, Charlie.
Morning, morning. Um, and then I did bring that paperwork with me, um. Thank you. Um, there were just a question.
Do we need a motion open of over here in person?
Yes.
Motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor.
Um, there was just a few final things for the end of the year. Um, I moved a transfer from, for, to move money from Marty, from the general basic fund to the capital projects fund with courthouse. Um, I moved it from an expense line to an operating transfer, cause the auditors said that it should be an operating transfer, not an expense. Then there was just a little bit of money for public safety for the sheriffs. Special events coverage for the Bellevue. Then there was, um, an unemployment claim for, zoning township expense for the trustees reimbursements, uh, job advertising for, uh, Becky's department for all of the new hiring that we've had to do. Um, data processing maintenance for, uh, document locator. And that's pretty much it. For total of, oh, and then we're moving, up to the amount of money that we're, we hope to transfer to the capital projects funds. So, that was five hundred thousand. I highly doubt that we'll be able to transfer that much, but just in case it's in there. And that's just in case we have any funds left over in any departments that in fund one.
Till the end of the budget year.
At the end, at the end of the year. So we'll take a look in a couple of weeks and we'll have a better idea where departments are at as far as. Yes, and so that is a, it's a goal. I don't know if we'll reach the goal. We're gonna, we're gonna get some. We don't know how much. But at least by doing this, we have that potential. And that's, so that will between, so that basically just reduces our any fund balance by eighteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars.
So how much is in that fund now?
Into the capital improvement fund, the jail fund or the way, actually, well, so the jail fund, that is zero, yes, because we haven't, we haven't established that, because that's. So the levy itself will come after we run taxes after July one of this year, then it will be our debt service levy that hiding will be on to you about here shortly. So we're kind of trying to anticipate a little bit ahead of that.
And I'm sorry, what was the fund balance?
Um, the courthouse, the courthouse capital projects is about a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Was that capital improvement, the same fund balance?
So could we use some of that courthouse money for the conduit? Next year, is that all into that or halfway there?
For the kind of, which kind?
Tie the courthouse to the jail.
Well, we actually have some improvements that we're gonna have to do for wiring around here also.
Yes, yeah, I know, there's a lot of.
Yes, we have wiring issues both places. So that five hundred, that, that up to five hundred thousand dollars would be able to, for the conduit, yeah, that you're talking about.
Okay, so, I, I mean, we're still hoping that with all this broadband infrastructure that they wanna do and give them money, we're still hoping we can like get some of that. That's what we're looking at and we're, along with our ELC room, you know, we're applying for grants for that, so that may, I mean, we can't count on it, of course. But at least it's a possibility too.
We're trying.
So we're working on that.
Yeah, absolutely. We're trying. And that's it.
Okay, motion to close.
There's no public input? Yeah, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
All right.
Then I would also ask for a motion to approve resolution number eight hundred and ten dash zero five dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one, for the amendment to the county budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one, as recorded in resolution number four, page three fifty-two.
So moved.
Second, spent moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I, motion carry.
They also need a motion to approve and authorize the chair's signature on the record of hearing and determination on the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty twenty slash twenty-two-one and certified to the state.
Don't move.
Or the motion in a second, all those in favor?
Alright.
Motion carry. So.
Thanks, Shelley. Alright.
Good morning, night, how are you today?
You know, I caught the sun on the way up and see if we can get it on the way back.
The sun does come up the east, yeah, yeah, it's coming east.
But we'll see, uh, it's been quite the monsoon seasons, uh, over, uh, at least in the DuPont area.
They're talking rain this afternoon.
Well, I'm happy to come up here and just got a call last week and just wanted to touch base with the board here and see, you know, what, what you've been hearing and what, you know, what your questions are so I can make sure that I answer everything appropriately. I put a few scenarios together, but I want to make sure I, I'm hearing what, hearing the whole reason I'm up here.
The things we discussed is when we could go out for this and someone said, well, you can't go out till you get that and.
And or what is our best scenario?
When, yeah, when, when is your best scenario, man? This is a, it's a good question to have. Uh, and right now I think you've been hearing that municipal bond rates are at very low right now. So you've got a low, you know, low interest rate now.
Well, I read in the newspaper, the city is just gonna save thirty-five million dollars because of refunding some bonds at one point three five or something.
And, you know, and you're seeing, we're seeing a lot of that in the bond.
And that's why we are anxious to see when we can do it so we can get in on that low interest rate.
Yeah, so, um, I'll talk a little bit about the pros and the cons and where you're at today. You know, in the timeline, because there is some pros and cons to when you actually go out and get some bond proceeds. So you should have a few of these summaries here already from yesterday, but they should, they should be the same.
And then if you have an extra copy, you might get one to print.
Yeah.
I have that, yeah. I think I have.
So right now, uh, John Benson, he's working on getting everything designed and.
John's on, by the way.
Yeah, going right here. Working on the design and, and John, I, there, so you're looking at going out to a big timeframe in the November time. If I'm saying anything incorrectly, John, go ahead and, and jump in like, so, and that's when you have a really good idea of exactly where, where your costs are going to be. And, you know, and, and when you're taking the perfect steps, you're, um, and saying, okay, we're gonna finance the exact dollar amount that we need. You wait until the bid and then you go ahead and finance. That's, that's the, that's just but you bring in the question of, uh, bring in the question of, well, interest rates are low right now. The board, uh, go ahead and lock in interest rates now or do it in a series of, of two bond issuance. And it has been done before. Some of the things that you'll want to consider is, is one, you don't really know where bids are going to be at. You've got a, uh, we're seeing in a, a bid environments where there's some inflation on materials, things like that. So that's a big unknown. Also a big unknown right now is where interest rates are going to be. In November, will they go lower or will they go higher? I'd love to have that, you know, that crystal ball for you. Um, they're very low right now. Um, I know that there is more room to go up than down.
Yeah.
You know, for, for an example, um, just about a month ago, um, I closed a deal with Avenue's County. They paid a jail for seven and a half million. Their nineteen-year bond interest rate with cost associated with, was at two point oh seven percent. So for, you know, nineteen years, you're looking at some very, very, uh, very, very low cost of financing. So.
Can I ask how big that jail was? Just out of curiosity.
Well, John, John knows, John knows, John knows that. Um, I, I, I don't know off the top of my head how big that jail was. But so what I want to say is, is, you know, what's, what's important to the board is, is to get a, a low cost of financing and then also finance, um, finance this project within the, the constraints of what the, what the, uh, bond referendum had. So what you're looking at is a, with the bond referendum, it was a five point nine million dollar bond refer.
Right.
The board and, um, you've worked with the auditor's office, you've looked at, you know, possibly up to three hundred thousand in cash for a total of six point two. And looking at that, when you're looking at a five point nine million, I said, okay, so could we maybe look at mitigating some of the interest rate risk and do, do one bond issue now and then wait and wait until those bids come in and you're closer to your construction. And there's some costs associated because you're gonna have two sets of loan documents. So it's, you know, one thing I thought about is there's two sets of loan documents. So you'll have one, we talked about briefly, is that you go through a rating process that has a fee associated with it. Then you'll go through the full sets of proceedings to have bonds, uh, two times. So they'll have two loan documents, two sets of loan fees there. Um, also each year when you have a bond, um, you have a paying agent fee where the county will pay the agent and then it gets disseminated out to all the investors that, um, that are paying into the bond. So there's that annual fee. So that's doubled what it, and if it was a larger bond amount, um, you could kind of soak into some of those costs which you're probably looking at if you do two sets of, two sets of bonds, you're looking at twenty to twenty-five thousand of additional cost plus, um, plus you're gonna have to be going through that reading process twice.
We don't want to do that.
Just, just with that being said, I'm reading over this briefly here, but if I'm doing my math correctly, you're telling me twenty, so I'm just gonna say twenty thousand. And there's also ten thousand dollars in interest that's gonna be due from now and for until seven months. So that's thirty thousand. But it also says that it could go up by a quarter of a percent. That because it's ninety thousand, that still means we save sixty thousand dollars if I'm doing my math correct.
But you're also gonna pay the attorney twice also of twelve thousand, correct? I understood correctly? Yeah, so you would be, so you need to, you need to add twelve thousand to that.
Take twelve up.
So I kind of just estimate between twenty and twenty-five thousand with bond council rating agency fee, paying agent, just an estimate. You know, I don't want to, uh, speak too, too much, but it's probably about twenty, twenty-five thousand. And then the extra time to do it, you know, to do two bond issues if you want to split it between.
So you're splitting it at fifty-fifty or?
Probably a fifty-fifty would make, you know, would make the, you know, the most.
So what, can we borrow all of it now or not?
So, and.
But taking the grand interest on all of it now.
You're paying interest on all of it now.
And what would that be?
Ten thousand dollars if it goes up.
So it's ten, so if you want it, so if you wanted to borrow now. Uh, and I, I just estimated a date of closing in mid-July. Um, versus six, six and a half months from now, if you're in January, that interest cost is approximately ten thousand dollars, um, that you're just paying interest on, uh, right now. So, um, the other thing that I'll add, John, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, the, the other thing that we need to take into consideration is that if we received the bonds in July, that we could reinvest that money into a CD or something. And then we're not going to be starting construction till March. We could, if, if we come up in March, we could reinvest another portion of that, which you know, typically, you know, depending on the interest rates could be, you know, another forty, fifty thousand dollars that we could also put towards project or consider, you know, offsetting your interest.
Now, that's interesting idea.
That, so that's kind of the point I was gonna jump into. So thank you, John. Um, so when you think of ten thousand dollars interest over, over a six-month period, um, if you do, if you do half of it, you know, if you're looking at about three million, you know, CD rate, you know, you can't make a lot of money right now.
You can borrow money to bake money.
You cannot borrow to bake, you cannot borrow money. Um, what, uh, so these are tax exempt. These are tax exempt bonds. So the IRS says that you cannot make more interest than you are than paying on it. Um, but you can offset it by reinvesting those bond proceeds. So when I see, you know, an interest cost of ten thousand for six, six months, I say, you know, uh, that's that's not a huge, a huge dollar now where you're, where the, the, uh, interest rate risk is, is with, with rates going up and down.
So here in this business, you look at these rates every day, you look at the projections, you look at what's going on, what's your best? I mean, to me, just the projections that I see, I don't see interest rates taking a big hike. Just because of the economy, a hundred things that are going on, uh, I just don't see it taking a big hike.
You know, um, they've stayed pretty stable and, um, I do know that, um, there's been, you've seen that there's a large influx of dollars that have been put into the economy.
Amen.
And that.
Didn't have to borrow that.
Um, and which is keeping the economy stable, people are getting back to work. So we're seeing, seeing stability. However, we're seeing some funny things with inflation and, um, with the way that markets go, when they turn, they turn quickly. Will, uh, you know, we're looking at about a six to eight month timeframe. Is, is it possible they remain stable? Yes, but I, you know, I can't guarantee that that, when that flip is going to be. Um, and when, you know, when the market does make a switch, because you're seeing that costs of things are going up. Um, and rates are staying low. So there is, there is some tension there. How long it's gonna be before we see, um, a switch in rates? It's really hard to say, but I, I know that. I'd love to give, I'd love to give you one. I don't have a crystal ball.
I see.
Um, I can tell you where we're at today. And tell you that, um, and, and tell you where you're at today and know that, you know, if, if you hang on and wait, um, it's possible that interest rates are higher and, you know, higher or lower.
Did I hear you say that you just did appalosis at two point zero six? Was that what you said?
Yeah, two point zero seven, but, yeah.
And is that one of the lowest you've done? For some reason, when I read, yeah, when I read the new article was one point seven six something and.
Well, it depends on the term of how many years it goes out to. So there's a lot of different, uh, and depending on, so Dubuque, they each have a rating. Um, I'm guessing that Dubuque and Avenue's probably has different ratings. So there'll be different rates for different, um, different credits too. So there's a, a lot of different factors to look at. Um, and then also just how it's structured to a bit level or if more of it's on the backend or frontend. So when you look at rates, you're, they're not always in apples to apples, but what you're going to see across the board is you're gonna see low, low interest rates, um, for tax exempt, uh, bonds right now.
So your ten thousand in interest, is that for half of it?
That's just the, um, what I looked at is, um, the difference in if rates stay exactly the same.
And that's on the full mount, the five point nine.
If rates stay exactly the same, um.
So to me, it would make sense to do the whole, the whole thing in one shot instead of occurring that extra twenty-five thousand six months from now.
Or you can just, you know, you could, you could look at doing bonds now, or you could, or you can wait to. Uh, when I looked at those two options, when I started looking at doing two bonds, I, um, one thing that I haven't brought up yet is the use of premium bonds. When you, um, have a lower par amount of bonds, it's harder to generate premium. I'll talk about it a little bit, a little bit more. But when the smaller amount is, it makes it harder to generate more dollars for you. So when I look at the two options, it's, it's looking at, it's looking at, you know, are you gonna look at doing a whole thing now or are you gonna wait until those bids come in and, and do it later? Because of those additional costs and then not only the additional costs, but the additional work from the county, you're gonna be, you're gonna be constantly having, uh, items on the agenda and the auditor's office is gonna be constant, you know, constantly working on this in the background if you're having to, you know, two bonds coming in in a, um, in a, in an eight-month timeframe.
I, that just seems absolutely unnecessary.
So then it becomes is, do you look at issuing the bonds now? Or do you look at, or do you look at waiting? And your, your bond council's going to have, um, some legal advice for you because there are, there are some risks each way. Um, and, um, I'll tell you, tell you what I know is that when you issue bonds before you have bids, you're going to be getting dollars where you're not a hundred percent of where, you know, what you're going to be spending. What we do know is that she told the taxpayers five point nine million, then she told them that she'd have a, a, a levy of thirty-two cents per thousand. So those, you know, those are the constraints. When you have a low interest environment, um, there is, um, there is the possibility of those premium bonds that I talked about to generate some additional dollars that can go towards the construction fund. Other counties have used, uh, for financing jails have used premium bonds to, um, allow for additional dollars to come to the project. Whether it's issuing now or later, but, um, when bids are coming in higher or there's additional, um, dollars needed for contingency cushion, it's something we can look at. Is it, um, and your bond council will advise some of, you know, some of the risks of using those premiums has been used, um, Avenue's County, Guthrie County, Floyd County, Warren County, I, I could probably, you know, the, the use of premiums have been used, but your bond council will say that there are, there are some considerations, some political considerations too.
What are some of the risks you're talking about? Can you give us examples?
So and I can all, actually to the way to kind of explain it, I'll just go through this document. You'll be getting more doc, more dollars for the construction fund than the five point nine million. The five point nine million is the amount that the reference of bond referendum. So you'd only be paying back five point nine million dollars worth of bonds. But for premiums, you'd receive more dollars and, and where it is, you'll be paying more interest. And so I'll, I'll, I'll go through this first page for you, uh, to talk a little bit more about that premium. So you'll see on this first picture to say sources and uses of fund, Jackson County, Iowa, five point nine million, uh, Geo jail bonds, A-plus rates as of, um, May twenty-first, twenty-two-one. So I'll, I'll show you that par amount, five million and five five million nine hundred thousand and then I'll show you a premium of just about under four hundred thousand three ninety-four, four oh eight. I have an estimated amount of cost of issuance of the one oh seven and then a, a construction fund amount of six million one hundred and sixty-eight. It's based off of roots as of today.
And what is that?
We'll show you that map on the next page here. This has a premium, you'll see, um, in the middle here, you'll see the yield and the rate. And the rate, that yield is that net effect or the interest. From point two five to point one point nine five. That rate that you'll show that are threes and twos, those, um, to explain what the premium is, is that. The investor receive that three and two percent rate, but they have to pay. Uh, they have to pay a premium to get that coupon rate. That middle column is the yield and that effect. So, then when you look at, so to get those threes and those twos. The county receives three hundred and ninety four thousand more upfront for that additional interest rate. So, if you look at that next page there. Um, that's the estimated debt service schedule that has that three and two percent. So, the county is, is still paying back that. Five million nine hundred thousand. Um, and then the, that's the estimated debt payment. The last page shows, uh, based off of your assessed valuation for twenty twenty two. This fiscal twenty twenty two, what that levy rate would be. And so, you'll see that it stays under that thirty two cents for that payment. Because of, um. Because of where the interest rates are at. Um, and using, and using premiums, you could generate some more dollars for, for the project. You know, to offset something, some of that, some of that, uh, unknown.
Pretty sure there's going to be some of that.
Always is. From what we've been told. Do you have these numbers in front of you, John, also?
Yes, I do.
And any comments?
I, I know that most counties have been issuing the premium bonds to get the extra cash. I did look at Appinews County, you know. The estimate was done and, and we're gonna be redoing estimates. I mean, we have to design to the constraints, the bond referendum. But Appinews County was at seven, the estimate was seven million nine hundred and twenty three thousand, one hundred and ninety nine dollars. And, uh. The project came in, uh, when they issued premium bonds and was three hundred and three thousand of contingency. Uh, the project was eight, six, oh, nine, one, one, one. So. If we looked at contingency and everything, the project was in the range of six hundred and eighty five thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Which represented, uh, from, uh, March of twenty till the bid of March twenty one. Approximate nine percent increase in current market conditions. And taking just the construction cost, uh, the construction cost had increased by five percent. Uh, over that year period. So, that, that's kind of the thing, we'll have to design your project within the constraints of the budget. Uh, of whatever you determine is the, the amount that you would have. I think in issuing the premium bonds, you know. That, uh, we, we're also talking about, you know, using capital improvement to increase. I, I think that we're. Based on what I'm seeing and what we've been discussing lately is that. The, the, we're gonna need at this point, under current marketing di- conditions, we're gonna need. That additional money for the project.
Can I ask how big a project that was?
How big a project?
How many square foot?
How many jail beds or beds or how big a facility were you talking to Appaloosa County?
I got the plans here in front of me, so if you give me a second.
Just tell me how many beds.
It was a twenty two thousand, seven hundred and eighty square foot building. And that included, uh, metal building and such with that, uh, number of beds. And a number of beds. I think it was close to forty five or. Where's one point one? Six.
That's okay, John. Um, so, I guess. I don't know, I, I myself would be leaning toward. Doing this sooner than later. I think it looks a little discarded, the future looks a little scary to me.
Yes, I'm feeling that same. I mean, if we only have to pay the ten thousand, if we can reinvest some.
Well, yeah, we can get, um, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, like you said, we can offset some of that somewhat. I, I, yeah, I would, I would hate to pay it another twenty, twenty five thousand to do it again. That, to me, doesn't make a, a pilot sense, so we can offset. And invest in, in whatever. Is that correct, John, by saying that, or am I wrong?
That you could reinvest the funds? No, I think that that would be very feasible to reinvest. At least, you know, five million for six months and then probably two to three million for another six months or at least three months. Which would generate a substantial amount of interest to go towards the project. And minimize capital improvement, you know, that you needed to utilize.
One thing I'll, I'll note is when you issue tax exempt bonds, it's, I'll have requirements to have a spend down. Of the, of the prop, of, of the dollars for the construction fund, um, to meet those tax exempt. Um, in the IRS guidelines, you know, checking to make sure that you're not, uh, making more money. So. One of those checks is, is that you'll have to have at least five percent of the bond proceeds spent. Within six months of receiving bond proceeds. There should be some pre-design expenses, I would imagine that should be close to five percent of that, that five point nine million. Um, you know, so if, uh, uh, I guess I have a question for John, is if they, if the county would issue bonds. In the next couple of months, would they be able to spend five percent, um, in the next six months?
Yes, that, the answer to that would be yes. I mean, we're either gonna have to. Take the money, you know, and, and Lisa can answer this too, is that. We're gonna have to at least have interim financing of some sorts to finance the design. Or, uh, utilize the, uh. Or, or utilize the bond funds. So, I, I would anticipate that, you know. Uh, I don't have the estimate in front of me, but I anticipate that you're probably gonna have two hundred thousand, two to three hundred thousand and, uh. You know, uh, fees for consultants and stuff like that, uh, you know. In, uh, six month, you know, by November.
Well, so, John, if we, like for the precast, if we prepay some of that, would, could we, us, we get a better rate? From them or better price? Would that be a good investment or?
Uh, I, I, in today's world, uh, typically we wouldn't, uh. Uh, do it because, uh, y- you're gonna publicly bid to precast, Larry. So, it's gotta be a public bid. So, issue bid documents a couple of times, there'd be a substantial cost to that, and we wanna get a competitive rate. By going to every precast company, you know, and, uh, and bidding, you know, like three or four precast companies. So, you know, you have to put out your invitation to bid and everything else. Uh, so, I, I, I would not see that happening. Five point nine million times point zero five is. Uh, two hundred and ninety five thousand, y- you're gonna spend that before, uh, November. Just getting documents out and everything else, so. And I guess my question, uh.
Construction companies, some of the majors said, quit, don't sell any more buildings because you would get. Wick was one of them.
Uh, the other. The other thing we'd be looking at too, Larry, is that, uh. We talked about getting that metal building up, uh, for storage and for the field office.
Right.
And for your future use. And everything you're ordering is out of ways now, but the steel building is something that. You know, it'd be nice to construct it so that when we start construction. We have that storage facility and don't have to rent a cube or something out there. To get that done, so that, that money could go to getting this building up, you know, by December, January. Uh, cause, uh, things are, league times are just out there quite a bit, so. It would be wise if we did it now to get that metal building established and, and get it up and, and, uh, operational.
We agree.
So, could that go out for bidding or preseason within the next, like a month or something?
Does not have to be publicly bid necessarily, so, yes. I would work on that immediately if funds were available, you know, becoming available. Uh, that way, we could start on that portion of it. Uh, and then I would hope and, you know, if we have a workshop next two weeks or whatever. That we can get the floor plan designed and start moving forward, and I'm gonna be working with Alex Davis. And getting some of the, uh, you know, get the topographic survey done and start civil engineering, so. I would see that that would be very feasible to get that up yet this fall, you know, this winter anyways. Uh, and, and, uh, at least have that ready to go, uh, to start the project.
So, Bob, what would be the estimated cost of a building like that? What do you, what would you guess?
Well, uh, depending on what we're looking at, does, just a, a rough cost. I, I mean, we're looking at, uh, I think it was ninety two thousand. For the building, uh, you know, uh, and the one I was looking at for Appinews. And then, uh, also it, uh, you know, we had to he, had some, uh, heat in there and stuff for future, for evidence and such. And electrical, I think you might be, uh, in, in the range of that hundred thousand, if that answered your question, Jack. And that's with a full foundation underneath of it. You know, I, I, I would, you know, I like to have a concrete foundation instead of pole barn and with a slab. But, uh, I mean, we would get prices put together with local contractors. To see what we could come up with, and then, of course, you know, the board can weigh in and. Plus, uh, help direct me if you know of anybody specific we should be using.
Well, I think that's something we should proceed with right away.
Okay, I would agree with that.
Going down their plan and where it's gonna sit and then we're gonna break up with the other building. I mean, I guess that building is gonna difference on how much of it is concrete and how much of it is insulated and how much of it, you know. Is heated or what? You have cold storage and you have a. Climate controlled area, I don't think the whole building's gonna be climate controlled, correct?
Yeah, uh, those are details that we need to work through and see what the costs are each way. Uh, Mike, if that, that answers your question. A lot of times, uh, evidence store, if you're doing large evidence storage and stuff, y- you kinda wanna at least temper that. But with a heat pump, you're talking maybe thirty five hundred dollars and, uh, they, they're, they're very efficient. And, and the cost is minimal, uh, to heat and cool with them. But you're, you're right, that's why I wanna get civil done with Alex. So, we know, you know, that we can all agree on where we're gonna place the building, what size the building's gonna be and. What efficiencies we want built into it. So, it is a process, Mike, but, uh. Uh, I'm willing to work through with you guys and, and, you know, even if we order a steel building now, you're probably out till November till the steel comes in. You know, you know.
So, John, on the building. I don't know what the cost would be if you poured walls up, say, I don't know what side walls are for ten foot high, would you? Would ready say you should do ten foot concrete walls and then just put the roof on it? Or is that?
Uh, I, I, I could check that. I, I believe that you'd have, there could be some. Uh, additional cost in doing that.
Okay, I didn't know if it'd be cheaper than.
That'd be a good checkout though, I, I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we, you know, you got a local precast company up there, you know, and. Uh, you know, close to you up in Dyersville, uh, eight. And, uh, they're working with Jackson County Fair on their particular project and trying to, uh. And, and donating some of the cost of that particular extension office project. Uh, Jackson County Fair and Extension, so. It's possible we could get a price and, and then do a cost comparison on that. I don't have a problem with doing that whatsoever.
I guess the other building product would be ICF forms, insulated concrete ones where you set the star foam and leave it. And blast through the outside.
I. I, I've used them before and, uh, I, I would, I, I don't know if I would use that.
Okay.
I, I would, I would go to, uh, uh, the steel buildings have become so competitive anymore that. You know, that if you can just get a small foundation wall underneath them and, and post and. Uh, post and frame those things, you, you can put them up relatively inexpensive and they're good buildings, insulated and such, so.
Okay.
Uh, but we can investigate both ways, so.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the price is going through the roof on different items.
Uh, yeah, well, if we bought concrete lately, that's up to a hundred and forty yard now, so. It used to be we'd do, we'd throw the extra, just make papers out of them, but, uh, now you. Cost has gone up on the concrete too.
How do we get a bond rating? How do we get that? And how much does it cost? So, a very good question, um. At the five point nine million over in nineteen year timeframe, looking at the county's finances and your audits. Um, very solid candidate for a rating. Um, there's two companies that do make most of the ratings here. Um, they are Rooties and S and P. Um, when you're looking to go out into the bond market, um, I'll work with you and we request a rating. And what happens after, uh, after we request a rating, we send to your most recent budgets. Audits. Um, and it, mostly your budgets, your audits and, uh, sometimes your AFRs. Things like that over to them. Instead of a call with the county, uh, typically you'll have the auditor's office. Um, the, uh, board members, if they so choose. Um, another item that they go over is, uh, the, the county's economy, so you'd have, um. To mine, when I think, I probably estimate like day higher, did you have to come in and join? And they have an agenda that. And are you also present? Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, and that agenda, what they do is they go over the bonds. They go over some, um, items in the economy, they go over the county's management. And then go over the county's, um, most recent audits and budgets, ask those questions. After the, that call, the rating agency, uh, meets with a group, assigns a rating. And then those, that rating is assigned to that bond issue. So, when I talk about doing one bond issue versus two. So when I talk about doing one bond issue versus two, um, you'd have that fee two times. Um, it is based off of the, the total amount, but you're looking at um for the total five point nine probably to the fifteen, sixteen thousand dollar range. That rating that gets associated with the bonds more than pays for itself in interest, especially since you're going out. Um, nineteen years, um, it, it pays for itself. Um, and uh would be, you know, the recommendation from me and from both of them that, that she would get bond rating. On, on these bonds to get maybe uh most cost effective financing.
Oh, I agree. I think that's an essential part of it.
And so we pay them directly or is that part of our bond?
Um, it's part of the bond. I've included it into those. Into those costs, part of the costs. Um, what's the cost to refinance?
We're hearing that the county saved how many millions of dollars? And let's say in ten years, for whatever reason, the market really drops and we decide to refinance, how much, how do you go about doing that?
Good question. So um, when you're looking at doing a nineteen year, um, and you go onto the bonds. The bond market rates will be locked in for approximately eight or nine years for a call date. Um, right now, advanced refundings um of tax events that accept bonds are um. Are not legal, so you have to wait for the call date or for a tax or to a taxable advance. Once that call date comes, the county has the option to prepay the bonds early after that timeframe. Or to refinance, um, and then you'd go through the process of setting hearings. Possibly doing the rating again and then going out and working and getting the correct rates.
So you're telling me if there's someone in Jackson County that in their will, they leave us ten million dollars. Once we go to bond, we have to keep this bond for eight to ten, eight to nine, ten years? And then if we all of a sudden magically come up with some money, at that point you can pay it off?
Yes.
Without any penalty?
Without any penalty after, yeah, after that. Okay, the reason there's the call date in there is because you have to have investors are guaranteed to get um a return. And that's what gets you, that gets you that bond market rate. You can shorten it, you can lengthen it out. Um, and uh, but you see, you see it in the interest rate. Uh, the typical bond uh call date is eight or nine years right now.
Okay.
That process, um, you know, that takes, takes a little bit of time to, you know, to get that call scheduled and um. But I definitely walk the county through that, go through, we have pre-calls making sure that. Um, Lisa and Shelley feel prepared. Um, I help facilitate those calls. I know a few of them a month. So I'm very familiar with these bond rating um companies. They know Iowa, they know Iowa well. Um, so um, would definitely step you through that process.
Went to bond right away. I mean, within the next month, that would.
Some of the, I wanted to come back around to the, you know, the pros and the cons of issuing bonds now versus later. Um, if you'd be doing it now, you'd be doing it before those bids are coming in. Uh, when you issue tax exempt bonds, you have um, you're issuing with a reasonable expectation to proceed. In the case that bids come in extraordinarily high. Um, or extraordinarily low, but, but you know, I, I, um, you may have bids coming in for the project. Uh, you know, what if it comes in at eight, you know, eight million dollars or um. And, you know, will, you know, will you look at redesigning or are you going to, or is, is the board. Proceeding with this project? You're fully committed and you're, and your bond council will ask you that, will ask you that question. Um, because that's an important, important thing to note. Um, if you're going to be doing this prior to having bids and proceeding. So I wanted to make sure the board knows that they're fully committed that, uh, that you'd work to do redesigns or things like that if. Um, it's come in extraordinarily high. Um, in the case they came in extraordinarily low, um, you'd have, you'd have proceeds um that could be um. Used for the law enforcement center. Uh, you always can use extra bond proceeds for debt service payments too.
We do need.
Um, but wanted to make sure that you, the board fully understands um. When you're doing it before you receive bids, that you're, you will be proceeding, you'll be uh, you know, spending down the bond proceeds. It'll be, it's our IRS requirement that you haven't spent down within three years. Um. Uh, you know, John, I, I wanted to ask you, the question is, um, you know, when bids come in high, you know, what's the, you know, what's the process? And what, you know, if, if that would happen, what would be um, you know, your recommendation and, and steps forward?
Uh, the process that we're gonna be utilizing and, and you know, I need to set a workshop up with board is that we're gonna be redoing the estimates. Throughout the process of design, so the board understands kinda where they're at. If a project comes in over budget. Uh, private code, you can't negotiate with three or four different companies. What typically will happen is you award the apparent low bidders the contract. And then you, you work with those particular contractors to reduce the cost within the facility. And make uh minimal design changes to reduce the cost to where the board feels comfortable. And proceeding with it. So basically as far as. I mean, I'd hope to God we're not that far off that we'd have to redesign the entire facility, so. I, I'm gonna recommend that maybe we don't finish an area or we bid it as an alternate to finish. Uh, that way we, we have ourselves protected, but we also have a price to finish that particular area. So I, I, I feel comfortable if, especially if we're issuing the premium bonds. Uh, and getting our, up to about six point one plus our capital improvement. Uh, I mean, we're, we're putting ourselves in a better position and uh. Like I said, the estimates on avenues, they were five percent over, but that, those estimates were done, you know, a, a year prior to the bid. So I, I feel that even if we use current market conditions for estimating, that we should be in the, in the range. But if not, we're gonna discuss possible things to uh protect the budget, maintain the cost.
John, do we expect to have a new estimate anytime in the near, in the near future or, or was there one completed just? Um, just recently or?
Uh, well, as you're aware, I was out of town all last week, but you know, right now we're trying to finalize floor plan. Uh, one of the supervisors and sheriff, you know, give me a directive on what they wanna, what they wanna accomplish and, and we discuss and. And then we're gonna be putting estimates, probably cost together for consideration for the board and sheriff to. Determine if we need to tweak it to get it in, so. Uh, as of now, we have, you know, we, we're having discussions and trying to finalize floor plan. So we have not done another estimate, you know, and, and that's what we're trying to get to finalize too. But like I said, we have to, you know, depending on what the board accepts, you know. We have to work within the, the constraints of the bond referendum or the available funds. So the, there'll be estimates done, probably, you know, after we can get a final floor plan from the architect and everything. In the next couple of weeks or so.
I guess to summarize is um. Two kind of big considerations as you have, um, where interest rates are at now, where they possibly could be. And so where bids are going to come in, um. And looking at where, where rates are at now, that some, some premium can be generated where rates are at. Currently in the market, um, they could be, could be there six, seven months from now to um. But, you know, know that there are some risks of, of proceeding, um, not knowing where those bids are at. Um, and, you know, the next steps would be to start, start that, you know, start that bond. Go ahead and start that, wait a minute, but go ahead and start that bond process um of getting some of those documents together. Uh, we wouldn't want to schedule this rating until, you know, right up, uh, up to the uh, way where you're going into the market. Um, because once you have that call, you are, um, you will have to pay that fee. And that rating only stays for approximately six, you know, six months. Um, you would have to pay that fee. We, you know, we'll go ahead and schedule that, get that going forward.
Heidi, how long does it take to get that scheduled, to get a bond rating?
Wondering really in it, it, it's in, it's always in flux based off of, you know, how busy um the rating agencies are. Um, I just talked with one of the rating agencies yesterday. They need about fifteen to twenty business days to get a rating right now. Um, that's a little bit longer than typical, but from what I told you is, there's a lot of, um, lot of bidders that are looking to issue bonds right now. So we, we probably um look to start scheduling, if you were looking to proceed, we'd probably start scheduling that the next. Uh, two weeks and start um. With the rating, the other item that we start moving forward on is the official statement. Uh, Northland will put together a document that will be disseminated to potential investors. Um, I'll be working with um you to get some of the items that we cannot get readily from.
How far back do they look at our budgets and?
Three years. Three years.
John has a question?
Uh, I, I pulled the estimate out just, just for rough evaluation. And estimate was done in uh approximately February two thousand twenty and it was a six point one in that range with a. Three hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-six thousand contingency. Based on, and we're hoping, you know, current market conditions will level out, but based on the nine percent. Uh, overage on Appinose that they determined, uh, I mean, that put us in the six point seven. And based on the five percent of actual construction over, I mean, I'd put you at about six point four, so, I mean. That gives you some kinda idea where, where current market conditions are. And uh, so, and this was based on a sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen square foot building at that time, so. Just gives you a kind of an idea and then, and that would, the six point seven or six point four, that would include uh, you know, close to the four hundred thousand dollar contingency. And it did include the kitchen equipment also, so that's what we're gonna be determining and working through.
Thank you, John. So that estimate was six point one with a three eighty-six back in February twenty twenty. Um, I just passed a little bit of information off. This is a, an actual rating report from a county that just got their rating uh done. I'll leave a couple of copies if you'd like to read it from, sure, from time to, uh, you know, if you've got nothing else to read this evening. But just to give, it, it, to, to give a stack and idea of what they looking for and how the language and everything.
What's the best rating we can get? I can see what they've rated these, this ad. What's the best rating that we should get, like A plus plus or?
So if you look at the, the document that I have, that has a sheet that looks like this. A triple A rating is the best rating that um is received. Yeah, um, so somebody that has a triple A rating would be, um, I believe the city of Des Moines. County has a triple A rating. Um, counties of your size. Um, have ratings in the, the low double A's to high A. Um, just based off of your taxable valuation and economies, um, your, your, um. That's definitely a part, that's definitely a part of it. What county has all these? Um, but one of, one of the things that they'll look into is, is things that are out of your control, which is the size. Um, of the taxation base. Um, counties of your size are typically in the, in the low double A's to high A's. Um, and that's where I would um expect the county's rating to be. Um, there's. Only a, there's only a couple counties that are in that, the, um, the double A's and they're the, they're the large. Large counties, um, Dallas County, uh. Potawatomi, so you know, the ones that, counties that have a, just a high tax base, um, those that are in the mid or in the, um. Low double A's to the highest.
So give us some perspective, so military commander, so every day I send soldiers' lives out into harm's way. So there's inherent risks that I have to take. So, knowing that, I try to find the tipping point of where the, the risk is not equal to reward. Let's take money out of it. I'm talking about the perspective of the, the premium, you know, whichever way we go there is. So if you take money out of it and you say, okay, these are soldiers' lives we're talking about, in your personal opinion, knowing what you know. Which way would you go with that stuff?
If we're looking at, you know, financing now versus financing later, um. I know what I know now of where rates are. I know that they're low. Um, I, there's more comfort in knowing what I know now versus, versus the future. Um, but I, I tend to, I, I tend to be more conservative and say, hey, this is what I know now. And, and knowing that there's taxpayer dollars, um, and it, it's, it is. You know, I, I think if I would look six months down the road and rates were just a little bit lower. Um, you say, ah, it's true when it could have, but if rates came and they were half a percent to a percent higher. I, I think that is, I, that's. I don't know that, I don't know that. Where, there's more danger in that, um, you're also.
Potential to offset that, that's my point, so. But if it did go up a percent, we're still back to where we're at.
We're still better than we are.
Yeah.
Um.
I guess I, I feel this would be a comfortable place to be. I mean, if we make this decision, say today or whenever. I just feel that we can live with it. I mean, it's something that, that will work.
Oh, it's a good time.
It's a good time. Um, you're also knowing you're, you're not, you're not going to issue bonds more than the five point nine million. You told the taxpayers thirty-two cents, so we have those constraints, so either, you know, either way, then I look at, okay, where's the bond market at right now? And it's good, and I, and I know that it's good. Um, I have a little less comfortability because I just don't know. Um, but.
So just so I understand, what you're saying is to bond right now, in a perfect world, no decisions today, but what I'm hearing. Everybody's saying to bond five point million right now, to make one bond.
Yes. Start the interest now, is that what you're saying?
I just, I'm trying to clarify that we're all on the same page and then we would be paying ten thousand dollars in interest. From now, from the time that we get the bonds, proceeds.
Well, we're gonna have expenses going forward from here on out. So you already made that decision when we checked for.
So versus if we go to bond, or excuse me, if we go to bid in November is what I think I'm hearing from John. At what point then would we have to go off for bond?
If you're going out to bid, you'd go out to bond shortly after that, if it's no. If it's November, you're probably, it's, it's sometimes difficult to get the bond up in, in December just because of times. You're probably in January, um.
Probably February.
Yeah.
Yeah, it typically are sixty to ninety days, aren't you, Heidi?
Uh, we could get you all teed up and ready to go since we know, uh, we know exactly how much you're going to be bonding for. We could get some of this, this documentation ready, so it's just a matter of bond now or bond in February.
Yeah, I don't have a financial crystal ball, obviously, uh, but. I'm pretty confident based on what happened. And my gut feeling is that with all this COVID money getting spread around, that sooner or later, the government's gotta come calling for that. Because, well, no, there's no free money from the government. Somebody's gotta pay for that in long. You know, I think there's more chance interest can and has to go up in the future than where it's at now.
I agree.
Now, does that mean I know what I'm talking about? No, but that's my gut feeling.
Other thing is we would lose the interest that we could gain by issuing the money at this point in time. If we're to reinvest it, if you got it in February, you'd be starting into construction and, you know, March, April, let's say. Then, uh, your, your chances of investing at that time would be limited somewhat.
You can't make money, you can't, you can recoup some of the interest. So if your interest rate, if your interest rate ends up being two percent, you can't. You can't invest, yeah, you can't invest for three.
But you would, you would guide us through that.
Yes, um, and so what's the bonds? You have that final number, you will be giving you a number and you'll look to proceed. And you're not going to be investing the full amount anyways, and it's only for a short period of time, so there's not, there's not. And let's, let's face it, CD rates and everything, I bet they're, they're pretty minimal as well, so there's not. Yes, um, but you know, if you're, if you're investing, you know, between four and five million dollars over six months, there's gonna be something there.
Just as a curiosity, I mean, I know we're a governmental agency and another way we have a lot of money in the bank right now. But only X amount is, is all of our money covered by FDIC, FDIC insurance? Right? If you, if you and I, but, but I thought like personally, if you and I had, we were only guaranteed by FDIC for X amount of dollars. If, can we put five point nine million dollars in the bank?
I've had this question before, um, I'm trying to remember, but, but it, but it is.
Another question I would say is, do we need to change our resolution for our banking resolution? Cause right now, we don't have the authority to do that.
I can tell you based on your response, your answer is that, yes.
Well, yes, well, so you're, there's, there's, I don't know the specific, but governmental dollars don't follow the same. Okay, and so, and I don't know exactly what that is, but governmental dollars have many more protections on them than, than our dollars.
So then we may just have to change our resolution.
Yeah, okay. And Heidi, so when, so if we were to go out for bond rating, start the process now, when would? We would only be paying interest until our June twenty-two payment. And then at that time, we would start paying off bonds, make our first payment. So you would start paying interest as soon as the bonds close, okay, so. Uh, no, well, well, if you're issuing that, if you're issuing now, we'd start that process, you'd probably sometime in the next two months.
Good.
Uh, you'd start paying interest. Yeah, July, August, start paying interest. Here's one thing that, um, I'll, I'll, I'll note, um, is that you're looking at generating premiums. If, if you start now, you also, that first year, you'll start generating premiums on that first year that you're making payment. The longer you wait, the longer you wait, the less time you can generate premiums on that first year payment. That's why that interest cost between six, seven months is only, is, is ten thousand dollars versus the, the full interest payment. Cause there's some less time to generate some of those additional dollars on that first year. Getting a little bit technical there, but there is, there is some advantage of, uh, some slight advantage of time as well.
So what's your no shit answer?
You can't specifically tell us what to do, but I am leaning very strongly to just move forward here, and that's my thoughts.
Well, I think that's a gut feeling of the three of us.
Yeah, I'm for sure. You concur that.
It, I do, I do. Because you, in soldiers' lives, taxpayer dollars, we know, we know today and.
We do know what it's gonna cost us today, and that's, that's the, I'm not, I'm not gonna roll the dice with somebody else's money. I know what it's gonna cost, and we're in, in our parameters.
And if we can do it today and save on the long run, we should do it.
I mean, if we're foolish enough to wait and then lose a half a percent, then, then we really look pretty bad.
That's what I mean, where we're at today is a comfortable place to be. Other than the cost of the building, we don't know, but I mean.
It's gonna take you thirty to forty-five days.
Heidi, so is there anything wrong where we haven't discussed today that would affect this decision down the road? That, you know, our auditor is not aware of this as a new process to all of us? And then living around the corner that, oh, you didn't know that, kinda thing, it's like, you know.
Tilt toes down later.
Yeah, so we'll, you know, we'll start these resolutions, we'll start this process, um, Bond Council will, um. Reiterate some of these risks to you, um, they'll always, they'll give it to you in a more than legal term, but a financial term. So, um, so that will, you know, they'll, they'll talk to you about premiums and issuance prior to. And we'll, I'll contact Steve after this call anytime, he'll, he'll advise you legally, um. And then the, the other thing that I will reiterate with premiums is that, you know, the county will be receiving more dollars than that by point nine. A referendum is for five point nine million, um. Will you be paying back five point nine million? Yes, um. Sometimes there's, there's just a question of, you know, if, of those premiums and then the political. Thought of receiving more dollars. I will say that it's keeping you in that parameters, you're paying five million back. And it's, uh, that thirty-one cents, uh, or thirty-two cents kept you under. So you're staying in the parameters of what you've promised that you're only paying that five nine back. There's, there's that question.
The time that we were talking about the jail, it was always that it was gonna be like six point three or six point two. So the, the, the taxpayers knew we were setting some money aside to, so that we can have the bond issue. Cause that's what we kept being told, if you come in at under six million, you'll probably get your bond issue passed. So this board decided, okay, we're gonna set some money aside to assist that three hundred thousand dollars so that we could get it to five point nine. So they already know that we're, we're, we are using some county funds.
County funds, yep, um, you're using county funds, you're also, um. Staying within those constraints because of when we did the planning, we put, we put some cushion in there, cause we didn't know where interest rates would be by the time you got to go.
And we didn't know we were gonna have deratio, we didn't know we were gonna have all these problems.
And so, um, yeah, so things that you don't know, I'll say is, um, we'll have, we'll have Bond Council reiterate those, those risks. To, um, if you generate premiums above and beyond the five point nine, you will be receiving to the construction fund more dollars than the five point nine.
Yeah, essentially what I'm asking is, are the questions we have not thought of because of our lack of experience affected decisions today? We haven't discussed, because we have a lot to ask. You know, down the road, it potentially would affect our decision today. We've discussed what we've thought of, but is there anything we have not thought of that could come into play, that could steer us?
That's that crystal ball you're looking at, I think you're really.
It's a good question.
Based on your experience and what you know, what you do, I just wanna rule it out, that.
No, I, I think we've covered, um, a lot of, a, a, a lot of the, the risks and everything. I hope I presented everything in front of you well, um. You know, it'll be just kind of a step through, just, just seeing some of these resolutions from Bond Council and doing this process the first time. We've talked about, um, generally how that, that process will go, there shouldn't, um. Be any, so, you know, surprises, um, that I have aware of. Thank you.
No, I get it, and if there's something that does come up, certainly you'll contact us.
Yeah, I mean, if we start this process and rates start coming up, you know, a lot different than what I've shown you today. Well, um, I'll, I'll contact you, get it from the board, and then we'll go from there, um. There, there shouldn't be any, uh, any surprise at the point that you lock, lock in your rates. I want, want the board to be comfortable and, and know what they've seen, and so, um. Guess what I'm hearing today is that, that you'd like to proceed with moving forward.
Yes.
If, if that's the case, I will reach out to Bond Council, we'll start putting together a timeframe. Um, of getting that official statement document that I talked about completed, that will be a resolution. Um, and then also getting that, uh, that bond rating scheduled. Uh, between the two rating companies, their, the fees and everything are very similar. The city does have a rating, um, with Moody's, so Moody's does know a bit about Jackson County. Um, uh, the other cities do not.
Who are the bond councils, if I may ask you that, we are dealing with or?
The bond council that you've worked with is, um, Oliver's and Cooley's, and Steve, Steve Neil has set up everything for the pre-lady.
Until we, uh, had them help us with the resolution and such when we go for the election.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah. And so does Moody's come here or do we Zoom?
They typically do it over the phone, okay. I will come and sit at the table with, with you.
Sure, it could be a Zoom or a, or both, I mean, if you're more comfortable with seeing somebody, I guess that's my point, I like that.
I haven't seen Moody's or, um, or, um, S and P do a Zoom, they've kept it, kept theirs on the phone. Most of them, they're in the Chicago offices and a lot of their work from home. And, and so they haven't shifted to Zoom, so they, um, okay, I'll go with their, um, but they'll probably do a phone call. And strike me as somebody like. Yeah, okay.
So, according to our agenda, we can take action on engaging them?
I would say yes.
Possible action, and so, um, if the board's ready to do that and, and start the process rolling, I think we can do it.
I would make that motion.
We have a motion and a second to, um, proceed with Northland Securities as, uh, our. Everything, Bond Council, so anyway, any further discussion? All those in favor? I, motion carrying. So now you will proceed to get some stuff ready for us to review and.
Yep.
Heidi will reach out to Bond Council.
She'll have to get the ball rolling, obviously, she knows, I'm not gonna tell her what to do, because obviously I don't, but you know, I mean. The, the ball's gonna pick up quickly here.
Well, and just so, you know, these two are certainly involved on, on, in the process.
Yes, um, so we'll be reaching out to you, um, we'll start that document.
Okay.
And then, um, I'll pull everything I can for the rating, um, that I know that they'll want, and then maybe. Just know that takes, you know, from the time to schedule that fifteen to twenty days and then get that done.
Yeah.
Probably, um, probably about, probably about a month out from the rating.
We should be working on taxes by then.
Hopefully. Heidi, well, thank you very much. If there's anything else, um, my contact information is at the top of that summary sheet today. And then, um, I'm gonna leave a couple copies of this, um, read it over, just, um. Proceeding.
Thank you, Heidi.
John, did you have anything else to add today?
Uh, no, Heidi, I think you did an excellent job. I don't have any questions. I do have a question for the board, uh. When we might be able to schedule a workshop, would it be possible to do it other than a Tuesday next week or?
Certainly.
That would help. I had a schedule, I buried it under some.
About the, the map or the floor plan that we got that has. The notes on it?
Is that, is that something you can go over with and he could see it? Are you talking this with Rick?
What is your timeframe, John, for next week?
Uh, I was just looking, I, I buried my schedule and the plans when I was talking to you, there it is. I mean, i- if we could do, you know, I can do it on Monday, but I, I, if we do it on Wednesday or Thursday or Friday.
Monday's Memorial Day, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that is this week.
Yeah.
So, uh, is Wednesday, Thursday or Friday work for anybody?
Wednesday after ten probably works for us, we get energy at night. Today I'm free. Friday.
Actually, Friday looks good, because only thing on Friday, May twenty, oh, that's.
I have a colleague.
Oh, we need to go to June, yeah.
Second or third.
Shelly is, um, getting, um, the future agenda and see if there's anything for meetings and such. So you're thinking, would you say Wednesday?
Wednesday or Thursday? Of next week, second or third, okay?
No, I may get Thursday.
The third's good for me. Sure.
I think you just asked up Thursday, right?
That's great.
Thursday, June third was good, was like, I don't think any of you have any meetings.
I don't have anything on my schedule, on my calendar.
I got something on the third, but just go ahead and.
What time?
What time, John, on the third?
Uh, whenever you, you think it's best, we'll, we'll probably have a good two hours into it, I, I would believe.
Do you wanna look at your schedule, see when on Thursday, if you do have something, you have something?
Yeah.
And then we can, you can, you can let, since we're free that day, you can let us know what time it is since, or let Shelley or Lisa know when they can let us know.
Yeah, since I get over there, I might even be wrong on the date or something.
So we can certainly make contact back and forth before then also to, to, to work out some of our little trips and forms here. After we talk, if you can get a hold of Rick and get a hold of John.
Yeah, I'm open.
Okay, um, Brad thinks he has something on Thursday, but he doesn't know what time, so he's gonna go back to the sheriff's office and look. And then we will get back in touch if you, we'll be on the third, on Thursday, we're not sure what time.
I have it marked down and that, that would be perfect, uh, preferably not six o'clock in the morning or I believe.
Don't be six o'clock in the morning, you can bet on that.
No, but, no, that will work perfect, uh, Brad, you can just give me a yell and, uh, I just have it marked down for, uh, Thursday. And you let me know what time we need to be there and we'll see what we're gonna do to get through this, uh. Floor plan, discuss things and and also the estimate of probable cost and everything else. So I know what you guys want us to do, so.
That'll be great.
Yes.
When I was whispering to Brett, could you hear me? I wanna know how soft I gotta get.
My ears were burning anyways.
I just gotta know how good that microphone is.
Yeah, I can hear you perfectly. So, well, I will plan on seeing you gentlemen next Thursday, the third and. Oh, that'd be great. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
We need to do with you other than. Next step will be.
Next step.
Something us for us to sign and all that stuff.
So the you sent the engagement letter with Northland, right? So good from. That standpoint, I'll be reaching out. I'll send an email to bond council today, start getting a timeline together. So you should see some timelines and things like that in the next couple days.
So I mean, you don't need, you don't need a little work area here either or anything like that or opposite or you think you're just going back and doing this, is that correct?
She's she'll go back to her office and prepare all the documents and the phone calls and. Let our bond council know that we're proceeding forward.
Gonna beat the sunshine.
I said, we're gonna be here for a while. You have to wait. Looks, I said, if we got time when we get done, we'll call you. You said he'd be around out there. He's his plan was to go to break purchase because I got a bunch of different things going on and then he said maybe. I have some other things going on here that.
A house showing.
There's still, there's one month at eight o'clock tonight. I put in the show, he went, you know, it's not gonna be after seven P M. She got kids that go to school.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the meeting today?